You ready? Hi. Call this study session for January 24th, 2012. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Daigle are currently absent.
We'll do our clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Hen.
Can you start at the other end?
Yes, I can. Councilman Hill.
Could you start in the middle?
I have a question. Question, on item number twelve, three. City Attorney, are you comfortable with the training that's taken place so that we can make this change with our public records?
I'm very comfortable with it. Michael Torres of our office conducted the training and I sat in on part of it. It seemed as if staff had a good grasp of the concepts and we're going to be, and also the city clerk who gave the training as well. I think the training was excellent. They did a great job and if they have any follow-up questions, they'll ask the city clerk and if she needs input from our office, she'll ask us. So I feel like we're really ready to go forward.
Great, thank you. Can I start now?
I'm ready.
Councilman Hen.
Okay. I actually had a question on number three as well. I'm okay on this although I want to make sure that the office of the city attorney is in fact copied on all significant or controversial issues, especially those items having to do with council members, you know. I just want to make sure. I'm fine with the city clerk leading this process. I just want to make sure that we're getting a legal look at stuff that's of significance.
Yeah, we definitely will. A majority of the requests that come in are for copies of building permits and things of that nature. So we're basically just pushing those off onto the departments for the things that clearly don't have any legal significance, for anything involving the council or items that may be associated with litigation. We covered that all in training, so they'll definitely be contacting the city clerk involving our office in those.
All right. And then regarding item number twelve on the classic car, Corona Del Mar classic car, car classic, I guess. There was discussion about Newport L. having, or there being a car show in relation to the Newport L. Foundation at a time period not very much different than the Corona Del Mar. And I'd like, I've lost track of where that stands. Is somebody still trying to move forward with the Newport L. car show?
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and members of city council. Laura Detweiler, Recreation Senior Services Director. We did ask that group to start working on submitting their special event permit application. To date, I'm not aware if we've received that yet, but they were moving forward with it.
All right. I'd just like to go on record that I don't think that's a very good idea for that second car show to be held close in time to the Corona Del Mar show that's been going on for a long time, has achieved real critical mass and success. And so I would hope that they're, through the course of this process, I'm not against Newport L. having a car show, that's for sure. But I don't think we want it in such close competition with Corona Del Mar. So if you can, I'd be happy to pass that along directly. I'm not quite sure who's working on that application, but in the interim, if you have an opportunity to pass my view along on that, I'm fine and if anybody wants to talk about it, they're welcome to give me a call.
Sure, and I'll follow up with you offline too as well about it. I'll check on the status.
Okay, thank you. And then on item number seventeen, I thought, this has to do with the smoking ban in parks. I thought there was some discussion about dealing with the commercial areas around the piers and the, and Fifteenth Street in terms of this simple hundred-foot.
That's not on the consent calendar, is it? Yes.
Oh, that's right, okay. I'll save that for later.
Councilman Selich.
I don't have anything, but I'll just second Councilman Hen's comments on the car show.
Councilman Hill.
I do have two items. On item number three, I too am supportive of the policy. I notice in paragraph, paragraph L. four, corrected L. four, it notes that, that all questions related to the applicants of particular exemptions shall be referred to the city's attorney's office. If the city clerk's office is to be in charge of coordinating this and everybody's going direct to the attorney's office, how will the city clerk's office coordinate it? It seems to me that it has to go through the coordination element and the way I read this document is it's all going direct to the city attorney's office. I think that would be the easiest way that the city clerk would lose control of who's communicating, what, what processes are in place and which ones are completed.
Yeah, I think definitely the intent was to have it go to the city clerk first to kind of field the questions and get those involved that she felt needed to be involved. So why don't we make a small clarification on that item noting that goes to the city clerk's first and the city clerk will involve the city attorney as, you know, as necessary.
Then on consent calendar item number seven, just a comment. I think that, I mean, I'm supportive of studying the refuse collection process. I think this report's very biasedly written to set up for outsourcing and, but I find with a bit of confusion in task number four, which is that the option of the council, that this consultant could be used if so desired to coordinate an RFP process. It says to solicit bids to provide refuse collection from private waste hauling firms or from the current city operations team. So are we moving to where we're going to have our own departments bid on, on work?
It is clearly an option to engage managed competition, which other cities have done in, in outsourcing activities and we will seek some advice from our consultant on how to set up and properly execute if that's a desire of the council to do a managed competition.
Thank you.
I would just comment that in private industry, I managed outsourcing proposals, probably a half a dozen or more, some very significant ones. And in every case, we asked the internal department to be a bidder and I think it's a good thing. It stimulates the internal department to think outside the box on how they do things and sometimes you end up with very good and surprising answers coming out of that. So I think it's a good thing.
Councilman Curry, Mayor Protem Curry?
No else.
And I've already given mine, all right. Our first item today at the study session is the Orange County Human Relations Commission's annual report, which will be presented by Ellen Olshansky.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner. Mayor and city council members and members of the community. I'm here today to update you about the role of the Orange County Human Relations played throughout Orange County and in particular Newport Beach over the last year. And I have presented you with copies of the annual report or you will get them. So let me start by highlighting a specific project that reached out to assess the status of some of the local residents who were attacked after nine eleven, two thousand and one, on the tenth anniversary of that terrible attack. First, we mourn those innocent people, first responders and their families who died at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon and in Pennsylvania. In the largest spate of hate crimes ever documented in Orange County, our innocent neighbors were attacked in the six weeks following this act of terrorism. These community members were targeted because they were perceived to be Muslim or Arab, although many were neither. So this year, the Orange County Human Relations reached out countywide to ask how these Orange County communities were doing. We met with over two hundred peoples in what, two hundred people in what we call listening sessions and we wanted to share with you a little of what we learned and there is a one pamphlet on that. So of most concern was the repeated stories that parents told us of harassment and bullying of their children. These children were among the most visible due to the top knot of the Sikh boys and the hijab of the Muslim girls. Parents told us of their children being verbally taunted, physically pushed and hit, having their head covers torn off and threats being made against them as if they were terrorists. We should be able to do better for all of our children. Cities struggled this year as various conflicts grew into public demonstrations where civility was often the first victim and anonymous internet postings fueled anger and intolerance. The OC Human Relations in participation with cities charts a course to a future where we are made strong by our diversity rather than being split into warring factions based on these differences. And we do this by mediating conflict, creating safe and inclusive neighborhoods and schools, developing diverse leaders and building understanding and respect among all residents. Many of our services are countywide and not easily broken down by each city as human relations training for police officers, hate crime training, promoting civility by being a voice of reason and respect, as well as community forums and educational programs open to the public. However, I would like to share a few, a little bit of data about some of our additional services specific to Newport Beach. Over the past year, we mediated one hundred thirty-five cases in the community or courts where one of the parties was a resident of Newport Beach in this past fiscal year. And in collaboration with Newport Beach Police, we documented one hate crime in Newport Beach. Four thousand eight hundred sixteen Newport Beach youth participated in our Bridges Violence Prevention Program from Corona Del Mar and Newport Harbor High Schools. Four Newport Beach youth participated in the Summer Leadership Camp or a year-long Human Relations Internship. Forty-three Newport Beach students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes Symposium at UCI, learning about respect, tolerance and making a difference in your school and community. And we helped build a sense of community with Newport Beach residents and staff through the hate crime victim support, as well as police, community reconc, one police community reconciliation case and conducting countywide listening sessions with the Sikh and Muslim communities to assess bigotry directed at these communities. So in conclusion, let me state that our society may be tested by international events, difficult economic times and rapidly changing demographics. By investing in this partnership between cities and OC Human Relations, we are taking positive steps to prepare to address those challenges to our civility and unity. OC Human Relations is proud to be a nationally recognized model for building positive intergroup relations through programs like Bridges, Mediation and Community Building. And we look forward to partnering with the city of Newport Beach as we go forward. By working together, we can make Orange County and Newport Beach a better place for all people to live and work. By doing so, everyone wins. And I'd like to present the mayor with a certificate.
And this artwork is made by?
She's, oh.
Yeah. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Ellen, and for all the people that do such good work for our county. Any comments from the council? Questions? Any public comment? Thank you, Ellen. The City Water Quality Conservation Program overview. John and Dave? John, John Kapler.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gardner, council members, John Kapler, Public Works Department. I've been asked to update the council on two items today, both water quality and water conservation. And I've kind of split my presentation up into what I'm calling current issues, the things the city's been working on and will continue to be working on, and then emerging issues, selenium being a good example of an emerging issue. Currently, water conservation, I want to address a couple slides on water conservation. Want to talk a lot of, a little bit about dry weather runoff and then TMDL's total maximum daily loads. These are the impairments to Newport Bay. These are the expensive items that are on our list. Water conservation, want to start out with some pretty good news, some kudo to Mr. Harmon and the MOD group. For the last two years, the city's been auditing our parks, our medians, looking at how much water we're using, looking at the, the, our irrigation controllers, do we need to upgrade? Are we, are we designed correctly? And last year, we saved four hundred and six thousand dollars in water. So very, very good news.
John, you might want to explain MOD.
MOD, Municipal Operations Division, Mr. Harmon and his group. So very good news. I have to say in full disclosure, that's retail cost of water. Another program that we're working on and we partnered with the Municipal Water District of Orange County and the Bluffs is UC Irvine has developed their own engineered turf grass and they call it UC Verdi. The Bluffs has ripped out quite a bit of turf grass over, over in their common area. They planted the UC Verdi grass. It's, uses fifty percent less water. You don't have to, to mow it as often. There aren't the maintenance costs of regular turf grass. And it, it doesn't look like synthetic turf. It looks like real turf grass. So I kind of encourage folks to go by and take a look at it. It's on Vista Del Oro, kind of across from the, the track at Corona Del Mar.
But it's actual, it's, it's?
It's actual grass.
Okay.
It's actual turf grass, so. It's across on the track at Corona Del Mar, on Vista Del Oro, down by the stop sign. I can't think of that cross street. Another project that we have here at the city is partnering with the Municipal Water District of Orange County. For our residents, if they want to remove turf and plant with a, a lower water use plant with a California native, California friendly, they can get a rebate from the water district through the city and it's, it's a buck a square foot. So if you rip out a thousand square feet of grass, you get a thousand dollars back.
Even if you replace it with hardscape?
Yeah, even if you replace it with hardscape. I knew you'd catch that one. Want to remind the council that before Governor Schwarzenegger left office, he passed what was known as SB seven seventy. All municipalities need to reduce water use by twenty percent by 2020. Couple interim targets, by 2015, you have to be at fifteen percent, 2020, twenty percent. The calculation is given to us, our baseline at Newport Beach is two hundred and fifty-three. It's GPCD, it's gallons per capita daily. It's kind of a weird unit to measure. We need to be at two twenty-eight by 2015 and two oh two by 2020. The good news is today we're running low two thirties, two thirty-two-ish, so, so kudos, kudos to our residents there. We're saving a lot of water in the city. This is a complicated slide. I won't go through everything, but I did want to document for the council, all of our public outreach, our marketing campaigns, Smart Water Newport, Clean Water Newport dot com. We're on Facebook now, we're on Twitter now, bottom left, all of our events, all the beach cleanups, Earth Day, the Water Mizer Workshop that's coming up, some partnerships in the upper right-hand corner, My Ocean, Earth Resources. And, and bottom right, we're, we're in a lot of schools, eleven hundred kids heard our presentation last year, almost two thousand if you include the Ocean Institute. And just a reminder, at the beginning of each fiscal year, we do give the council a, a full detailed update on our full marketing plan for that year. Another pilot program we're working on, Water Smart, this is a startup company and it's a couple guys, and they came up with a web-based software program for residents to monitor water use. And you look at your water use over time, how much did I use yesterday, last year? There's, there's a social media competitive aspect to it where you can, can look at your neighbors, not, not Joe next door, but like properties, like size lots, how many, how much water are these folks using? It looks at indoor water use, it looks at outdoor water use. If you're using more than you should, the, the program sends you tips. Maybe you look at a low-flow toilet program, a high-efficient water washing machine, maybe there's a leak or something. And the program knows, how do I say this? It knows what rebates, it knows what rebates are available and can market those specific to that resident that's using, say, too much indoor water. It, it's a startup company. They, they've got money for five pilot projects. They've asked Newport Beach to be a partner. Mayor Gardner and the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee have heard a detailed presentation on this. They, Newport's going to, we're going to go ahead and do this to three thousand residents in the Big Canyon watershed and I'll get a little bit more into that later. Huntington Beach is, is going to go ahead with a pilot program and then three cities up in kind of the Northern California area. About a year ago, we did a resident survey, twenty questions mailed it out to four thousand residents, asked a bunch of questions. Is urban runoff important to you? Is water quality important to you? Is water conservation important to you? I, I have four or five here that I thought were kind of interesting. I, I won't read through all of them, but, but overwhelmingly ninety, ninety-five percent of our residents feel that, that water quality and water conservation are very important to the quality of life in Newport Beach. I did put this last one down, I thought was kind of interesting, and let me read that. I should be able to use as much water as I want, as long as I'm willing to pay for it. And twenty, twenty-six percent of the, the respondents thought if, if I can pay for the water, I can do whatever I want with it, so, kind of interesting. Dry weather runoff?
John, did you ask people about drinking water at all?
No, just, just water, no, just water conservation and water quality. Dry weather runoff always important here in Newport Beach. This is a whole separate presentation in itself. Just wanted to let the council know that ET controllers, we, we have the ET controller program, we're going into the third phase of that. It's, it's a grant to the tune of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're applying for another grant next week, seven hundred thousand dollars to make these controllers available to our residents. Water use monitoring, we certainly do plenty of education here in the community. We've, we've got ordinances, the, the tiered water rates that we discussed a little bit and we have a, definitely have an inspection and enforcement program. Again, just a snapshot as a reminder of all the things we're doing. TMDL is one of our favorite subjects, total maximum daily loads. I kind of like this map, but I don't like the name of it, our problem areas, but I, I kind of stole the picture, so I didn't know how to change it. But it, it does do a good job of, of showing some of the challenging areas in Newport, in our watershed, in Newport Bay. The interesting thing is if you look at this map, it's a few years old now, but we've got some pretty good success. Upper Newport Bay dredging, the Rhine Channel, very, very good project we just finished. The ASBSs, I, I want to talk a little bit more about that later. We've got some bacteria issues in West Newport around Newport Island. Little good news to report there, back in ninety-nine-ish, we had four long-term postings in Newport Bay. Those were signs that were up twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Think twice about going in the water, please don't go in the water. Today, we have one left, so we got rid of three of the signs. Trash, we do not have a trash TMDL in Orange County or in Newport Beach, but Los Angeles does and it's, it's pretty expensive. So not only do we want to avoid that, we, we simply want to keep trash out of the waterways. Thought this was kind of interesting. This is the Newport Boulevard Bio Swale, about a mile north of here. That's the lighted industrial way to kind of orient yourself. This was a project the city did- This was a project the city did three or four years ago. The problem is, when it rains, we get a ton of trash coming down this drainage channel. Here's poor Mr. Miller standing up to his knees, keeping the trash out of the pipe, because it literally clogs the pipe. If you can see, here's the guardrail here during the rain, we're almost flooding Newport Boulevard. It's that big of a problem. We wrote a grant last year, city staff, to the tune of a quarter million dollars. And we're going to be putting in two CDS units just upstream of this swale. These guys do a really, really good job of capturing trash. And part B, which is more good news to the story, is we partnered with Costa Mesa. They're going to, they're going to install trash streams on all of their inlets that drain to this area. It's a 420-acreous drainage area, probably, I'm guessing, probably 80% of it's Costa Mesa. So, hopefully, Costa Mesa will keep the trash out of the system, and what gets into the system will catch with the CDS unit. So, really looking forward to this, this problem kind of going away, if you will. Just to remind the council, we do lots of beach cleanups in the community, Surf Rider, Adopt a Beach, Zero Trash, the first Saturdays. A little plug for Earth Resources, their Hold On To Your Butts Beach Cleanup is scheduled for April 14th this year. E-Waste, again, kudos to the Municipal Operations Department. We hold E-Waste Drives three or four times a year. Residents can come for free, get rid of their old computer monitors, their televisions, and any electronic waste. Next one's scheduled for February 25th. And Sirteer Properties over in Fashion Island, they also hold quarterly free E-Waste Drive. Their next one is, this weekend is the matter of fact. We, we kind of partner with them, we, we do a little bit of advertising for them, we help them get the word out.
John, do you happen to know where that one on February 25th is?
General Services. General Services, yeah. Emerging issues, I, I know the council's familiar with most of these, but I wanted to give kind of an update of where we are on a couple of items. Selenium, the, the big item of the day. Areas of special biological significance, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Some water quality testing methods we're working on, and then one final slide that I, I want to chat a little bit about some current regulations. Selenium, we have three hotspots in Orange County. The one that's important to us is right down here in the bottom center, Big Canyon. Here's a, that's not a very good photo, sorry about that. Big Canyon watershed, here's the country club, jamboree, Upper Newport Bay, port streets, yacht streets, our reservoir, kind of spyglass. We, we have a selenium issue in, in Big Canyon, we need to address it. We do not have a TMDL for selenium, that's, that's good news for a lot of reasons. We're working on a program, the, the regional board's participating, they're at the table, it's... I, I don't know, it's probably not going to be a cheap fix, and it's going to take a lot of time. We're looking at runoff reduction, the irrigation controllers are going to be key. We've simply got to reduce the runoff in this watershed. Probably some diversion projects, we've got a couple of hotspots in the watershed we want to take a look at. The golf course lakes appear to be a, a selenium issue. The golf course is cooperating with us fully, so, so we're working on them. Hopefully, we'll identify some grant monies. If you have any specific questions on selenium, please ask me. I'm, I'm going quickly, because I know you've, you've heard detailed presentations on this. It, it's a long-term fix, but we're working on it, and we've got cooperation from all the partners, so it's, it's good news, so, it's good news today. The ASBSs, another issue we've been working on for many years.
John, again, you want to explain what an ASBS is?
Thank you.
For people listening.
Thank you. Areas of special biological significance, there are 34 protected areas on the California coast. We have two of them in Newport Beach. First one starts at Little Cronin del Mar and runs down to about the start of Crystal Cove. The second one runs down Crystal Cove. So, these are called marine life refuges. So, so they're reefs, they're areas that receive special protections. We've been working with the state on our two ASBSs since probably 2004. A lot of monitoring, a lot of assessment, what's the health of the water, what's the health of the reef, what's the health of the organisms living there? The good news is, I'm all about good news tonight. The good news is, a lot of the, the work has been paid for through state grants. We've been very fortunate to receive a lot of grant money. Two and a half million dollars for, for the most recent Prop 84 grant. The update to the council is, it looks like the state is finally going to issue us some detailed requirements for our ASBSs, and let me go to the next slide. There, we're not sure, but we think they're going to, A, prohibit a dry weather runoff into the ASBSs. So, what we need to do is, we're going to have to put in diversions. We've got three discharges directly into an ASBS. Here's a photo of a storm drain at Cameo Shores. We have two pipes in Cameo Shores and one in Shore Cliff. So, we're going to have to put in a diversion, we're going to have to infiltrate that water, we're, we're going to have to somehow deal with this dry weather runoff. The second item we think they're going to require us to do is to monitor stormwater events. So, there will be some monitoring costs to the city during storms. We don't know the details of that yet, but that's, that's the direction they're leaning.
How are you going to divert that Cameo Shores drain? I'm very familiar with it. Curious as to how you can possibly divert that.
Well, we'll have to divert upstream. There's a sewer, there's, there's a sewer line, so pump station into a, into a sewer. Maybe an infiltration gallery further up where the park is to try and reduce the amount of water? Irrigation controllers?
Where, where would you build a pump station for that, out in the middle of the Brighton Road or something?
No, 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 we, we'd go way upstream where the sewer line is. So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't divert here, we couldn't do it, it would cost way too much money.
So, you would intercept what comes through here upstream at appropriate spots?
Yes, sir.
And whatever below there would still run out this pipe?
Yeah, I don't know how we'd deal with that. Maybe we could put in an infiltration gallery to catch the little remaining flow that would be south of the diversion? We kind of did a similar thing at Pelican Point. It's, it's, it's a, it's a challenge.
When you say the state will require us, are they issuing an order, or how do they?
They have.
Send you a letter and we get a comment, or how does that work?
The, the ocean plan, the ocean plan, which we're regulated under, specifically prohibits any discharge to an ASBS at all. This will be an order from the state. We did get a cease and desist order back in 2004. We've been working with them since that point in time, so this is kind of what we're ending up with.
So, when you say working with them, is it a give and take process, or what the requirements end up being?
Well, it is and it isn't. The, the ocean plan specifically prohibits any waste whatsoever, but what we've done is, we've looked at the health of our ASBSs, and, and getting to zero dry weather runoff may not be physically possible. Additionally, we've got some other issues in our ASBSs. We, we've got a trampling issue at Little Cronin del Mar, Cronin del Mar Beach. So, if you look at the overall health of the ASBS, it's more than just dry weather runoff. So, we've looked at our overall health, and we presented that data to the state, and they're, they're kind of agreeing with us, so. But it's, it still looks like we're going to be, we're going to be stuck with the diversions. I, I'm not exactly sure how the engineering's going to work on it, but we'll figure it out.
There's also two layers. I mean, the ASBS is not the same as the marine protected area.
Correct.
So, that we have the, ASBS is Regional Board, Water, Water Board, whereas the marine protected area is a different state agency, so there's also that complication. But you said we had three. I'm wondering why we are not looking at all of our canyons, because they, some of them just, like Little Cronin, discharged directly.
It's, it's a direct connection through the cities, through the city's storm drain system. That's how the regulations read.
Oh, just that.
Yeah, and, and actually, thank you, you reminded me. The other outstanding issue that I'm not sure how it's going to be resolved yet is we've got a couple, couple dozen private drains that drain in, directly into the ASBS. Think of the, the backyards or the rear yards for the homes on Brighton.
Shore Cliff, too.
Yeah, Shore Cliff. So, there's, there's going to be something there, and I don't know if it's going to be monitoring by the city or a permit from the state, I'm, I'm not sure how that's going to shake out.
So, so you're saying all the stuff that comes down Morning Canyon is exempt because it doesn't go into the city's storm drain system?
Correct, correct, it's a natural waterway.
There's probably more stuff coming there than some of these other areas.
Exactly.
As, as Mayor Gardner knows, there's, there's a bit of water coming down Buck Gully, so I completely agree. MyOcean Beach Monitors, I, I think the council's familiar with this. We have two beach monitors, one at Cronin del Mar Beach, one at Newport Pier. They, they record real-time water quality data. MyOcean has some additional monitors available. They, they've come to the city, to the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee and asked if we'd be interested. The committee's interested in doing that, so, so we may be looking to install some more of these. They're free to the city, so, just, again, another good program that I wanted to make the council aware of. Here's my last slide, and I, I struggled a little bit with the name of this, and, and I'm calling it Regulations in the Real World. And what I want to attempt to do here is, I want to convey to the council that there are a lot of regulations in Newport Beach, there's, there's a lot of water quality permits, there, there's a lot of stuff going on, and we're, we're compliant with the regulations. We always have been and we always will be. But, but these state standards don't always make specific sense for every water body everywhere. And, and here's my example. We have a, there's a state bacterias, bacteria standard of 104, that's colony-forming unit. It's 104 pieces of bacteria per, per water. But the standard doesn't look at the type of bacteria. Is it, is it human sewage, is it, is it pet waste? Or is it natural bacteria that's not a health threat? So, so we, at the city, we've been looking, we've been looking at some of the bacteria, and, and what is this bacteria, and where does it come from? And Mayor Gardner's quite familiar with this, but this is the slime in a gutter. It's just slime in a gutter. It's called biofilm. It's naturally occurring, it's been around for three billion years. It's, it's not a health threat to anyone. We've taken samples of this biofilm, I'm getting numbers of nine million. So, the state standard's 104, I can scrape nine million out of a gutter. We'll never meet 104, it's not possible. So, we, we, we've been doing some projects, doing some research on this, and we're presenting this data to our local water board. And why we're doing that is, the water boards have the authority to adopt what's called natural source exclusions. If, if we don't have a swimmer or surfer risk, and we can't meet state standards, we still have a healthy water body. So, we're trying to get their attention to take a look at this. We just, we simply can't get from nine million down to 104. The San Diego region has a natural source exclusion, the Los Angeles region has a natural source exclusion. We do not. So, we're, we're trying to start that dialogue. And that's, again, my attempt here to, to explain to the council and to all my bosses that we're, we're trying really hard to do the right thing, and...
I think you're being a little modest.
Yeah.
John is part of the gutter buddies, which is John and the Skinners and Monica Mazur, who have actually done some cutting-edge science with about a $20 budget, as far as these natural sources.
We've been published a number of times, we've been asked to go to the EPA's conference in Miami. It's pretty interesting work, quite honestly. And 20 bucks is pretty much what the budget is. And that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Have any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Sure.
Any public comment on this item? Well, thank you, John. And now, the CAL FIRE, very high fire hazard maps. I know this is an item that's got a lot of interest.
Madam Mayor, like about 90% of the people who live in my council district, I apparently live in the designated area, and the city attorney has determined that therefore I should recuse myself on this issue. I'll leave to others to decide whether that's a good public policy outcome, that, that area is unrepresented, but nonetheless.
Well, what if you have a road in your district? I mean, we, we're all elected to represent the city, and there's issues all the time in our cities and districts. We recuse ourselves from an issue that is...
If there's a road project right, within 500 feet of your house, you should recuse yourself. For instance, if they were going to rehabilitate some type of road.
Okay.
More than just half.
So, let's say I vote 10 extra policemen and they serve my neighborhood. Is that a conflict?
No.
I mean, I just think this is just totally overreaching.
Yeah, because that would affect the public, public generally. I, I, I tend to agree with you that the conflict of interest rules are, are very broad and, and probably too broad. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't write the rules.
How can we vote on these speed limits in the city when we do the speed surveys? Virtually all of us are affected by that, where our properties are.
Because it's...
Yet we have the whole council accusing themselves.
Well, there is a public generally, except if it impacts the, the public to the same extent, then, then you're not prohibited from voting on an item. If, if there was an item, for instance, that where everyone had some type of conflict, then you'd go to the rule of necessity and you would draw lots and things of that nature to get enough members back to vote on an item.
Since there's only one council person's speed, it would only probably be one that would have to recuse himself.
All right, Mayor Gardner and council members, Ron Gamble, Fire Department. On an issue that's been up for quite a long time, fire, finally, the fire maps, after I think three years, four years of effort with the state, have finally arrived at our doorstep. And they're up for adoption. The very high fire hazard severity zone is a geological area designated according to Government Code 51178, which contains the type and condition of vegetation, weather, topography, structure of density, which potentially increases the possibility of wildland conflagration fires, uncontrolled large fires. As a result of the 1991 Oakland Hills Fire, Assemblyman Tom Bates created the Bates Bill, and it became added as Government Code 51175 through 89, and amended the Health and Safety Code. Essentially, it says that fires are extremely costly, not only to property owners and residents, but also to local agencies. The prevention of wildfires is not a municipal affair, but one of statewide concern. The wildfire front is not the only source of risk, since the embers, which carry on along, a lot farther than the fire front, often cause fires well into the communities and are beyond the area impacted by the front. So, it's, it's necessary for the cities and counties and state agencies and federal agencies to work together to prevent these fires. A little history, in 1993, we had the Laguna Canyon Fire. It caused property damage of $434, $435 million. It destroyed 366 homes. And these fires in Southern California produced a call for increased structure protection so that these wouldn't carry on to other neighborhoods and cause more fires. This is a picture of what the Laguna Fire did coming into Newport. There's another map over here, same. You can see where it almost kind of outlines what the, the state came up with for the very high fire hazard severity maps. It involved going through the Crystal Cove area, went into Crystal Heights, and what would be Bridge Park, Coastal Peak, all those homes up there, although they weren't there. You know, we had a lot of, we had some homes in the framing stages off of Newport Coast, and it was because of the wind changing and dying down that it didn't go into Buck Gully. But the hazard is there. Again, in 2003, we had more fires, causing 730,000 acres of, turned to ash, destroying over 3,000 homes, claimed the lives of 22 people, and cost insurance agencies over $3 billion. And finally, our last big firestorm, which kind of went all year, in 2007 and into 2008, there were over 20 wildfires going from the Mexican border to up towards Santa Barbara County. And it destroyed quite a bit more homes, as you can see, nine people died, 85 were injured. A million people were evacuated, causing it to be the largest evacuation in California history. Over 6,000 firefighters fought these places, and as you can see through that picture and a satellite image, the firestorms could be seen from space. So, during a red flag conditions, when the temperatures are high, the winds are, are blowing, and the humidity is very low, green trees will burn. And if you notice, a lot of times, the flame lengths will be three times the size of the fuel. So, a 20-foot tree will be, you know, 40 to 60 feet of flame length. As you can see by the firefighters, you can see how high that is. It's this direct flame impingement and radiant heat that causes those first row of homes to be, to ignite in a wildfire. And then the other factor is the flaming ember or firebrands. We have, you know, the flame, the ember receptivity, which is the quality of embers, the quantity of embers, and the distance that they are carried in the convect, in the convected heat, going way beyond the firefight, often more than a, than a mile down, and, and finding an ember bed of either the wood-framed homes, unprotected eaves, little corners, and, and lighting a lot of homes on fire. So, we'll get a lot more damage. So, between the two, the radiant heat and the embers, we lose a lot of homes in, in wildland fires. So, defensible space, what this defensible space law is all about is an area adjacent to a structure dwelling where flammable vegetation has been modified to provide defense from the approaching wildfire, or vice versa, to minimize the effects of a house fire spreading into the wildland area. It's a buffer zone for the, for the firefighters to suppress the fire and hopefully save the homes by extending lines. The law has changed since 1993. In 2008, Senator Kehoe enacted a bill that became law in 2009, which amended Government Code 51175. And pretty much the key things that, it preempted less restrictive applicable, applicable local ordinances. It requires the CAL FIRE to develop these maps, which is what this map is before you today. It added winds to the factors that... It added winds to the factors that must be considered, like our Santa Ana winds, and it required the defensible space of a hundred feet from the homes, but not beyond the property line. I think that was one of the issues that I was addressing over the weekend, is where people were concerned that it went over, that they were responsible for their neighbors. It's every landowner is responsible for their property up to a hundred feet of, of defensible space. Why did the state expand the very high fire hazard zone? This, this map uses new technology and scientific process. Cal, University of California, Berkeley, fire scientists work on this. They use things like fuel, topography, terrain, weather, history, like the Santa Ana winds, home construction, type of materials, and density to come up with this. And accurately reflects and expands the zones that are susceptible to the wildfire from hazards, from these hazards. This is a picture of GIS kind of condensed this just to show what, how the effects of Newport Beach. As you can see, that this is, this is Crystal Cove, and then this is our city boundary and the Crystal Heights area and Newport Coast. And then it goes along, just about Orchid is where it is. And here's Buck Gully and Morning Canyon. So this shows what the area, through all this testing of the embers and the radiant heat, of what would be affected if a large fire came through again. This is another map that the, the CAL State, or CAL FIRE sent. They are showing the whole effect. They showed the very high, the high and the moderate zones. The, the very high are the only zones that are up for adoption right now, but the other zones could be considered by council. We do have our special fire protection areas in place with local codes, so they do cover a lot of these areas that do abut these areas already. But this all is, as you see this, this is kind of, this is Crystal Cove anyways, and then it gets into our area, and then Irvine. And you can see where we have like places of East Bluff that are high and Banning Ranch. So there are other areas. But we do have, like I said, the special fire protection, local codes that really do take care of these areas. This is kind of a loaded, I apologize for the size of this, but this really kind of shares a lot of the information in a nutshell of what, what this is about. Many areas that we have already have these requirements in place. Some will require additional defensive space. Currently, we have those special fire protection areas, homes that abut the, the canyons. And those require new construction according to the California Building Code seven A, fuel modification plans, and a five-foot setback. A lot of these areas in Newport Coast, as that was annexed, Orange County Fire Authority was already enforcing those homes that were built with seven A. They already have, a lot of them have fuel modifications. There's only a couple of communities that don't, and the five-foot setback. So this is already in place. No new construction currently requires hazard deduction, as in Morning Canyon and Buck Gully and Big Canyon, of areas right now, it's only dead and dying. But as you'll see in the next slide, it's not really doing enough, if there was a large fire, to help us have defensible space. The very high fire hazard severity map that we, we have before you now covers a larger area and into developed areas, not just those homes abutting. And they will follow the requirements of that Government Code 51182. And that will require those homes like those couple blocks into Cronin Del Mar and a couple other areas where they, if they are doing any kind of new reconstruction within the area, that will require the fire-resistant building materials to be added. And that is to prevent the, that is to prevent the embers from intruding into those homes.
So new construction would require fire-resistant materials?
Materials according to seven A, which I'll talk about in a minute.
What about the five-foot setback for areas off of the canyon?
No, that was a misconception that we, we, it was a good catch. We did clarify that in the ordinance. That was only intended for those areas that abut, that abut the canyon, to where we need to get access into the canyon. So not the, not the blocks that are away from the canyon. That still has the same. And if an existing home abuts the wildland and the fuel modification plan is in not existence, kind of like Buck Gully or Morning Canyon, then defensible space with flammable vegetation management will be required. And this will kind of, this will take place, we'll have to expand our inspections right now. We do about two hundred and seventy-two inspections with a company called DUDEC, the Environmental Services Company. They go out and they have a CAD system for all these properties, and they see each year what, what dead and dying needs to be removed, what new plans have been added, if they are on the fire-resistant list. And what we think that would, should take place is have them expand these inspections, kind of come up with a plan on how we can manage this fuel management to become more of a defensible space. And that'll be all dependent on another thing I'll talk about in a second here. This shows you a picture of two thousand and eleven in Buck Gully, and you can see the overgrowth and that we really don't have a good defensible space out there. And this, this law, the Government Code 51175 through eight-nine, that this map will help is what is going to require, requires homeowners to, to provide that defensible space. So how it'll affect your property, if you own a home located in the very high fire hazard severity zone and in the local responsibility area, which is Newport's, you're required to do the following. And that's maintain around and adjacent to your occupied dwelling, a structure, a fire break, or defensible space. And that is just within a hundred feet of your home. So we'll talk about what that involves in a second.
Okay. And this is, this is for everybody that's in...
This is for everyone?
Not just on the canyon?
Well, but it really deals with the people on the canyon. Because if you're on a thirty-by-thirty lot, unless you have an accumulation of, of, of wild growth or anything like that, it does also have to do with non-vegetative flammables like wood piles. You know, they'd have to restrict that. But there, there isn't too many homes that have a lot of growth that would be involved in this. There are rules in the, in the Government Code that talk about single specimens, trees, separation, types of resistant plants. But there aren't too many homes really, it's really talking about in those homes, the, the seven A construction. So really, we would be looking at those homes along the canyon. Because if we can stop that fire from producing all those embers, then we're going to, you know, we'll be farther ahead on that. Again, all those homes will, when they do new buildings or reconstruction or additions, will follow the seven A. And then if they are doing a real estate transaction, they will have to disclose that they are in a very high fire hazard severity zone. Defensible space means maintaining a hundred feet of, on all sides of the structure by removing flammable vegetation. The amount of fuel modification necessary takes into account the flammability of the structure, as affected by the building standards, building materials, location, type of vegetation. And that's where coming up with those plans of seeing how much vegetation is needed so that these latter fuels, or the fuels that build up the heat and radiant, radiant heat towards the homes will not ignite the home.
Okay. Again, I'm, I'm confused. I'm thinking I'm not understanding because a hundred feet from all sides of the structure...
Well, of your property line, of your property line.
Well, if I'm a hundred feet from my property line, I don't have a house. I'm on a thirty-foot lot.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm on a thirty-foot lot. So if I'm a hundred feet from a...
It only goes to your prop, the end of your property line. So the, on the sides, if you were, this, this law was also written for those people that are out, that they have a hundred feet.
Okay.
So you're only responsible for the land that you own within a hundred feet to your property line. So if you were only got a five foot, then you're not responsible for that, because the neighbor would be, and the next neighbor, and the next neighbor. But if there's nothing there, then it's, it's those land, those lands on the canyon?
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, because it's, I'm reading it at least, it says a hundred feet around. So I'm trying to figure out how a small, particularly, well, most of our lots would figure out. So I think I'm not understanding it quite.
But also just to your property line. Just to your...
Is there some reason there, I mean, did the law not have another clause to say what you're explaining? I mean, if you read that literally, you know, it means a hundred feet. And we all know, practically speaking, that many lots are not that large. So is there some reason you wouldn't just put in...
So it's up to a hundred feet of the property that you own.
Right.
So if your property line ends there, then that's where you're...
I understand that. Isn't there a way to communicate it more clearly through what you're writing?
Okay. Probably, yes. I could have, yes. Straighten that out? Yeah. I can still do that in the future. Okay?
Yeah, because that was very confusing to me. Just, I was trying to figure out how we were ever going to do it.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, there, you can have vegetation around your house?
Yes.
It just needs to be fire-resistant?
Should be on the list of fire-resistant.
And the amount of it, the amount of it needs to be within standards, whereas somebody can say, well, it's still a properly defensible space?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Ron, when you look around out in Cronin Del Mar, what do you see as the most likely plant that would have to be removed? Any, any guess on that? I mean, we're really talking about people are going to have to look at in their yards and say, what of these are non-flammable and what of these are flammable? Right?
Mm-hmm.
Eucalyptus?
Well, that'd be tree. You're talking trees, you're talking eucalyptus, pine trees, cypress, things like that. But you are also, by this code, allowed to have single specimen trees.
Including if they're flammable trees?
Including that, yes. This is, this is more about defensible space and not removing every type of, of non-fire-resistant plant. And so what would, what would reduce that hazard but not take out every plant that's, that's flammable? So the fuels would be maintained in this, again, again, the amount of fuel modification necessary, so taking into account those things, the fuels will be maintained so that a wildfire burning under average conditions would be unlikely to ignite the structure. So again, would, plan would have to be the plants we leave in there and a fire burning through there. And with the fire-resistant homes, hopefully, well, depending on if they were fire-resistant or not, how much would have to be removed so that under normal conditions, these homes would not ignite? With the most intensive fuel management being within the first thirty feet around the structure, obviously, for the radiant heat and direct flame impingement.
Are there any exceptions based upon the design of the home? You know, a home with encased eaves?
Yes.
A non-flammable roof, stucco versus wood? All of these elements have a significant impact on the susceptibility of, of an ember starting a fire and that type of thing. Is there a quid pro quo in this, or...
Yes, there is. And that's what that says. The amount of fuel modification will take into it, can't affect the building standards, the building design, the building materials. So yes, it will. And that's what's going to have to be figured out. There isn't one model for each home. It depends on, like I said, it, there's, there's going to be quite a bit of, I've, I've talked to that company that does our, our inspections right now, just to get an idea of what that would take for them to come through, update all their maps, increase all their things. And right now, I know that would go out to bid, but DUDEC would, they said a one-time fee. They, they currently do about a thing of about fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand per year of the, our annual inspections of these two hundred and seventy-five homes on Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, and, and Big Canyon. And they said that would be about a seventy-five thousand dollar one-time fee. And then they'd get into some annual thing. But that was a rough estimate, ballpark figure, that I just trying to figure out if, how we could come up with a plan that would reduce that hazard.
Who's going to make all these judgmental calls?
That again would be that company that we have higher, that Environmental Services then with our input to see how that can be reduced. Because that is kind of left open to how can we reduce that hazard?
The decisions are appealable, though.
So the home, the homeowner isn't deciding whether they're in compliance. They're going to be, there'll be an expert that will come to the property and make an assessment, and then notify the homeowner about what they believe is the appropriate modifications to make? Is that how it works?
Yes. But then, then we work with the homeowner also. If the homeowner wants to do it ahead of time and do his own, to keep his home safe, then we would, we would go out and we would look at his property and be able to say which, which ones are more, or fire-resistant and which ones aren't. And a system, or we could wait for this inspection to be expanded.
And I think you're, you made a good point about the hundred-foot area and whether that goes beyond the property line or not. I think that's something that we can help clean up to make sure the public knows that that doesn't go beyond their property line.
Examples of a hardened, a fire-resistant hardened home in that Chapter seven A is Class A roof assemblies. They close the attic and foundation vents with tighter mesh. You box the roof eaves with fire-resistant construction so the embers can't get up underneath there, the radiant heat. Glazed dual-pane glass, one-hour fire-resistant construction and a fire-resistant deck construction. So these are just examples that are found in seven A of this area. Concern was insurance rates. Would they go up? Orange County Fire Authority did a, a research on the impacts. They surveyed five counties, and that was LA, Kern, Ventura, Fresno, and Tahoe Douglas. And they found that there were no reports of any increased fire insurance premiums following the adoption of these very high fire hazard severity maps. A lot of, some of the largest California insurers use ISO's software called FireLine. And also, the California Fire, the CAL FIRE maps evaluate the fire hazard and not the, not the, the risk. The hazard is the measure of the likelihood of an area burning, whereas the risk is a measure for the potential of damage. And the risk can be mitigated by these factors like defensible space, ignition-resistant construction, and emergency access and water supply. So the hazards plus mitigation would be the risk, which would be reduced. So the staff from, or CFA also contacted the California Department of Insurance, the California Fair Plan, and ISO. And the research shows that the industry uses sophisticated hazard and risk products, and there has been no use in their underwriting of using these CAL FIRE maps. So they shouldn't have an effect on that. A timeline for implementation, according to five-one-one-seven-nine, the local agency shall designate by ordinance the very high fire maps, make them available within a hundred and twenty days of receiving them, which we did receive them on October twenty-seventh, that they would be adopted by ordinance. And the city may at its discretion exclude from the requirements of Section five-one-eight-eight-two an area identified as very high fire hazard by CAL FIRE, following a, a finding supported by substantial evidence in the record that the requirements are not necessarily within the area. Fire Department doesn't believe that any areas in this fall under that. And if we did have, let's say, a neighborhood that did fall under that for a temporary time span, we'd just fall into that cycle again in ten years if you didn't have restrictions on building with seven A and there were remodels or additions, then we'd fall back in that problem where they'd be at risk. You can't really eliminate this, or exclude this unless you exclude or get, eliminate the hazard. And that would be the canyon areas and the state park and everything that, that create much of this hazard. So unless you're going to diminish the hazard, you can't kind of exclude this area. So the three things that'll help you with the home is defensible space, which is in this Government Code, the fire-resistant construction, and emergency access so that we can get in and douse any of the spot fires. Again, a lot of these areas are already covered in Newport Coast. And anything new in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon have been required then to get fuel modification zones and build with this. So it's just the existing defensible space that we'd be working on. And that's it. Other questions?
Have questions? That was...
Oh, go ahead.
Very interesting. I know it's something we've been waiting for. I think that there's been, I don't know, missing, not necessarily misinformation, but just misunderstandings as to, as I say, what the language actually meant and, and that sort of thing. So I think this has been very helpful. But, oh, Ed? I mean, Councilman Sowich?
Yes, thank you. Can you go over again what the, I understood that the five-foot only applies in old Cronin Del Mar, let's say, to the homes that are right adjacent to the canyon. So the standard three-foot setback is okay in the rest of Cronin Del Mar that's in the higher fire hazard zone. But again, what is the purpose of the five-foot? Do you say it's for access to the canyon?
Yes. Emergency access into the canyon, get back there into that, into that defensible space.
So do people have to keep that area... So do, do people have to keep that area clear?
It was also, it was also not just for emergency access, but for the, I think it was home to home, the radiant heat and the heat and the fire in between the homes, in that area, so it wouldn't get into the canyon.
So, so if I had a home and I wanted to do a significant amount of remodeling there and I had a three-foot setback and my neighbor had a three-foot setback, then I would have to close up any opening windows in order to maintain that three-foot setback, or I would have to get rid of it altogether and go to a five-foot setback?
If you were remodeling?
Yeah, if I was doing a major remodel.
Trying to think of the code on that. If you went to the, we have had alternate methods and materials occasionally where they have sprinkled, to offset that hazard, they've sprinkled the whole area with the eaves and the, and the attic. They've also had areas where we've gone, given three feet on one side and you get six feet on the other, so that's kind of offset it. But usually try to offset the hazard.
I guess, I guess the way I read the ordinance was that you would basically have to create a blank wall if you wanted to maintain that three-feet setback, which means you'd have to close up window openings and things of that nature, which may or may not be practical depending on what the floor plan of the house is. It may not be practical to do that.
True. I'm not, I'm not aware of, of having to close it up that were already existing, other than the new area, but I'd have to look into that.
Oh, maybe I read it wrong. I thought, I thought you would have to close up existing openings as well as new openings.
Let me look into that and I'll be back. Be clear.
I, I think that, we'll, and we'll have a public comment in a moment, but I think that we're clear that this is not something that we're ready to do on, tonight, especially on the consent calendar. So I'm hoping staff is taking note of all these questions that are coming up so we can come back with, with more information also.
So I, I have an additional question. So if this is, goes into effect, how quickly, I assume there's an inspection process, so I've been inspected, how quickly do I have to make the changes that are identified in the inspection? And what happens if I don't?
Well, it's, it's, the state law is what would be, I guess, the, the district attorney's office, but we, I mean, we would be enforcing it through our codes. It would take, we adopt it, then there's 30 days until it becomes effective. And then we have to come up with the, the expanded inspections and that'll take some time. So for us to actually, I, I would assume six months to a year by the time we-
But once I get inspected?
Yes.
And somebody sends me a, a letter that says, "These are the things that you have to do to meet the requirements of this very high fire hazard area on your property," how, how fast does that have to be done? Is it like immediate?
We give a 30-day notice, we give a 15-day notice, and then we start contacting to see what we can do to get compliance. And if not, in the past, in the past, when it's been under the fire departments, you know, and they're the city's responsibility, then we have gone in and cleared and then billed the homeowner. But for this, it's, it's, the state is the, the one that's doing it. So I don't, I don't know where we would follow up from there.
Aaron, did you have something to add to that?
Under the, under the state law, there's a lot of different enforcement mechanisms. You know, one, they go through kind of a fine penalty. Another one, they basically give notices and go in and clean, clean it up themselves. So I'd imagine there's going to be some significant period of time to work with people to make the modifications.
And there's an appeals process. And so what does the appeal process look like? Has that been described yet? Who's, who does the appeal go to?
Yeah, the appeal would go to, on, on determinations regarding, on what is required, it would go to the, what's the name of the appeals, the Building Appeals Board? Building Fire Appeals Board?
Building and Fire Appeals Board.
And then that appeal, what is the sort of the burden of getting an appeal? Is it, is it, like I said, something about substantial evidence and that type of thing? I mean, is it virtually impossible to get an appeal of a decision that's made administratively? What would be the burden?
It's, it's substantial evidence, not, basically a preponderance of the evidence, 50, 51%. I think that overall the appeals boards are usually relatively reasonable as far as what the requirements are.
All right.
I had one question for, for Ron. Talk to us a little bit about the Newport Coast and those areas where there are not fuel modification zones, they're hazard reduction zones. Is it your expectation that this will cause those to be just modified and still remain hazard reduction zones or that they become fuel modification zones?
Only if they did new construction would they have to then become fuel modification zones. So there would be a defensible space in that, in that-
So these, these are then the, the common areas there, that, so you're saying that if there was new construction in the homes adjacent to the common areas, that they would have to redo that as an FMZ or, or not? Sounds like not.
New homes adjacent?
No. So this is areas that are already built?
Yes.
And they're, they're right now in just hazard reduction zones?
Right.
What is the likelihood of any construction around it that's all developed and done, that it would cause a trigger that would make them put in a fuel modification zone instead?
Only if they did their own reconstruction or whatever, not around, not around them. Right now, it's just a defensible space. So it would be a flammable vegetation modification.
Okay. So if they're not rebuilding the whole tract, is that what we're saying, basically? Those are the homes in that neighborhood are already built and done and fairly recently, in fact?
Yes.
There wouldn't be any requirement to change that to a fuel modification?
There's only two areas that I know of that don't have fuel modification areas. And I believe they're both townhome groupings. So if that's the case, then it would have to be the whole group, I think.
The whole thing, okay. All right. Thanks.
Will we be getting, will we be getting maps that we can read?
You know, that-
I mean, all I can see is red and brown.
It's a large, yeah. There, GIS, Ryan Salomon and Scott Watson did a great job of putting together a website that homeowners can go to and find. It's found on our website, the Fire Department's website, but also it's at HTTP forward slash forward slash GIS dot Newport Beach, CA dot gov, forward slash GIS pub, forward slash NB map.
We'll, we'll do a good link to it on our website.
So anyways, look on the website and we do have that where we talk about it.
And you can bore into the neighborhoods with that, just like the rest of the layers?
Yeah.
On that map, you can zoom down to see?
You can, you can enter your address?
Okay.
And you, it'll go right to your area and show if it's in the very high fire hazard. You can back away from that to get a perspective of where that exists in the area. And you can kind of back away and move over and see that, like, the area is along that, the border of Orchid and-
Okay.
And those other areas.
I, I did want to let the council know too, that it'd be, my recommendation that we not act on first reading tonight, to, to let the, this percolate in the community a little bit more, because I, I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get enough notice of this. And this discussion's been helpful and Ron's here and I know Ron, Ron's email address is on the staff report and we'll get that word out to folks and maybe need to have a couple more small meetings about it too.
And you will send out the, the link?
The link.
Councilman Selig?
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to notify the property owners too, rather than just a general notice in the paper, just so people know what's going on.
Notifying the property owners?
I'm not against notifying people, don't get me wrong. But everything we do affects somebody and, you know, whether it's this or any law or any change in the building codes and things like that, I mean, are we going to set a precedent now of sending out notices to property owners? What if some get it and some don't? Then we, do we open ourselves up to issues with failure? You didn't notify me, so why should I be bound by it? I mean, I-
Well, I, I agree, Steve, but this is pretty significant. I mean, I wouldn't want to do it for everything, but I think, I think a lot of folks would think this is a pretty significant impact.
Well, I agree, Ed. It is a significant impact, but we do a lot of things that have significant impacts on a lot of things. And it's just a, it's a slippery slope. Got to be careful.
Well, but, but still, this is a situation, it's not like we pass an ordinance, a, a change in the building code and if your existing residence doesn't meet the new code, you're, you don't have to go back and change your house. But this is a circumstance where you do have to go back and make changes to the existing, as I understand it, once this passes. Every home is subject to having to do something to make, to be in compliance to this.
But in those areas, isn't every house, the ones that we're really talking about are, are already subject to that? I mean, we've already, this is perhaps, gives us a little more power, for lack of a better term, to enforce some of these things. But that's been one of the reasons we have been trying to get something is because we've had so little luck of getting the people that, I mean, nobody on Buck Gully isn't aware that we've been talking and trying to get fuel modification there. I mean, that's not a surprise to anyone, or in Morning Canyon and up in Newport Coast, most of the areas, as you say, they already have a fuel modification zone. I think our, my concerns are not so much there, I think they already know that. But that when we saw the maps, the question was, how does it affect those, those other houses who had never had any idea that they might be in a high fire hazard zone? And this has clarified a lot of questions for me, but I do think we can use another session or something to, so people do get the word.
Well, perhaps I'm misunderstanding then. I, I had the impression from this discussion that there will be a large additional number of homes that would potentially have to make changes in their vegetation around their homes compared to what our current ordinances, ordinances require. Is that true or not?
That would be, yeah, approximately 272 homes of Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, Big Canyon that currently fall under the hazard reduction of the dead and dying. And this government code requires a defensible space modification.
Of live plants? Yeah. So I mean, so there's, there's 272 additional homes that then would be potentially required to be doing something?
Additional homes or homes total? Because most of the homes, like I said, in Newport Coast, homes that don't abut Buck the Gully, abut the gully or any canyon, just have to follow 7A if they are doing construction or reconstruction. It's only the homes that have but those canyons or the 272, which we currently inspect for the hazard reduction, would have to do a little bit further of the fuel modification, not a fuel modification zone, but a defensible space, flammable vegetation reduction.
Well, see, this is what I'm trying to get at. I mean, how, how much actual impact on homeowners would we expect coming out of this? I mean, is it, now I'm getting the impression that it's not very much.
Yeah, let me try and restate what Ron said and Ron can correct me. It would mean that if I'm one of the 272 today, I already know I have some obligations and, in fact, the city inspects my property. Tomorrow, or when this is adopted, month from now, two months from now, I would have some additional responsibilities, but I'm still part of that group that has been notified from day one that I've got things I need to do to clear my property.
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear as much?
Because you haven't gotten any new construction, you don't have a fuel modification requirement like the new construction does, so your home still has that overgrowth. And instead of just the dead and dying, now we need to reduce the flammable vegetation.
Well, I, I think in light of what Ron said, we could certainly do, if we have an already direct notification to those 272, we not, we, we did more general notification, correct?
Correct.
In time with some information and some links to the website and time for the council's next consideration of this item. And then we, we will and have communicated, we communicated a little late, but with the homeowners associations to make sure they understood it as well. We'll do that again.
Yeah, well, I guess my concern was just that, maybe I'm not understanding it either, that, that one day a fire marshal or somebody from DUDAC is going to show up at my doorstep and say, "You have to do all these things." And I had no idea that I was aware that these regulations were being applied to my property. I mean, I, I agree that anyone that lives on the canyons, you know that, they've been doing that for, for years, but it seems it has more far-reaching implications than just the people that are actually abutting the canyons now.
And you're speaking now of how my development ability might change if I kind of came in for a remodel? Because those are the, that's the group that wouldn't know that otherwise.
Well, also, as I understand it, what they're talking about doing is having DUDAC or somebody come in and assess different properties and then coming in and telling people that you don't meet the standards and now you're going to have to remove plants and do this or do that. Maybe I'm not understanding.
Is that the 272, though? Only the 272 would be subject to a new DUDAC visit?
Yes.
Okay.
And but that we were, we wanted to work with, you know, educating them and trying to work with them on this new process and tell them what, what is taking place. I know it'll, it'll take a lot more effort because the dead and dying really wasn't much going on, but this will, you know, and it, it doesn't leave it open as far as, you know, depending on whether the home's fire resistant or depending on what types of, of flammable vegetation there is. But we want to work with the homeowners during this process. It isn't going to be like an overnight thing because we have to get this inspection widened and, and, and process and then start working with them. And they'll be aware of it. They're, they're already aware that DUDAC goes out and looks for that, but we would then work on, you know, what, what this will take to create that defensible space.
So I, I'm still trying to make sure that when we come back with this, that we've got our arms around it, you know, from the standpoint of impact. I just want to make sure that we have a good view of that. So there's 272 homes-
227.
-that would now be subject to inspection, not just for dead and dying, but for live plants-
Correct.
-that might have to be changed to become, to get into compliance.
Flammable vegetation.
That map covers a very large area.
Well, because, because if you sell a home, then you're, this, these map, this map over here, shows the very high fire hazard severity zone. So if a fire builds up through there, that's where that hazard is. Fortunately, because of our adoption of Newport Coast and the requirements we had, we already required that they build with 7A, uh, Chapter 7A. We already required fuel modification zones, which are four zones, 170 feet long, you know, to, to restrict the ladder fuels coming up towards the home and the radiant heat. So we already had those in place. So there is a big area that's in that fire hazard zone, but they've always been in our special fire protection zone. We've always had local ordinances to protect those. And we adopted Orange, Orange County Fire Authority's input in Newport Coast for those areas. And now there's just a smaller area outside of just the areas that, do Buck Gully, that , Buck, Buck Gully, that are, because of that ember zone, still are required then to follow that 7A and that real estate disclosure.
Okay. I, I understand that if you're doing construction, you're in a different category here. What I'm trying to get a, a count on here is there's 600 or 1,000 homes in the area and 400 of them are in already established fuel modification zones and it's unlikely that there will be much, if they were in compliance to start with, under the zone that they're in, it's unlikely there would be much impact due to this designation. And then there's X hundred homes where now there is some differential impact because they're within this colored area of the map. And for that additional X hundred number of homes, now they're subject to an inspection that's a different kind of inspection that says, "You've got live plant material, you now need to be in compliance with defensible space and this is what you have to do." I'm just trying to get a sense of what's the differential impact on how many homes for the adoption of these maps?
Okay. In this, in this area, I had GIS figure, try to figure out how many homes were in this home. There's about 5,200 homes in that giant red area.
Yeah.
But most of those homes, and I don't know the exact number, but most of those homes already fall under the Newport Coast guidelines, which is that 7A, and the fuel mod. And we do annual inspections of those fuel mods because they get a maintenance fee, a maintenance help, and we make sure that they're, they're kept.
And if you're in a fuel mod area-
Yes.
-you already have to comply with live plant material-
Exactly.
-for defensible space, right?
Which is even more restrictive than this defensible space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay.
Because of the implementation of this map, how many more homes will now be subject to having to do something they never had to do before? It doesn't have to be an exact number, I'm just looking for some sense of this.
I only know of the ones that we currently inspect. If there are others, then some of those homes, like those two communities that are, don't have fuel mods in the Newport Coast, will probably have to do some type of fuel modification, or not fuel modification, a defensible space and reducing those. I could name those two communities.
Alteza, right, and one more?
Alteza and Tovari.
Okay.
They don't have that.
So they may have to do a strip?
So they may have to have, yeah.
Yeah.
They may have to have the reduction of that flammable vegetation.
I, I'd like to make a suggestion, that one, we be sure that we go back to all the homeowners associations could be affected, including Corona Del Mar Residents Association. And that we, you've seen some of the confusion up here, that we write a new report that addresses these, these questions because right now we're, even with this discussion, I'm still a little confused. And I want to be, we want to be sure exactly- a little confused. And I want to be, we want to be sure exactly which houses are affected which way. And I, I don't mean every individual house, but you understand what I'm saying.
I could see a good table helping to explain that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll get through this. All right. And now, a public comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Cal McLaughlin, and I thank you all for your memorial. The, the situation is that I enjoy the firefighters because they remind me of the mountain climbers that I frequented in my youth, okay? They're very brave guys, they're very good, but they're not necessarily very precise in their, in the way that they tell you something, okay? You more or less have to follow them along and do what they do. The situation is that as I read this thing, and I just read the site, thing on the website, I was convinced that all of Corona Highlands, for example, would be involved. Not just those of us that are on the canyon that have been doing it, and we have a very reasonable relationship. But what about all of the people in the center of Corona Highlands? Okay, that's a lot of houses. And as I read it, there's a lot of shrubbery that is too high, too close to the house, and is not going to make it. And yet, because the houses take up so much of the lot line, if we take out all of that shrubbery, the people are going to complain like mad, okay? Because it's going to destroy the aesthetics of the situation. So, since all of those houses outside of the road that's on Buck Gully, or the road that's on Morning Canyon, were not involved before, we've got all of them that are going to be facing the golf course that are going to be involved, and we've got all of them in the center of the community. We're holding our annual meeting tonight, and I'm supposed to report something to them on this, okay? Well, thank heavens, I'm going to report that, it's going to be continued. Because if you all think you're confused, I've read the thing, I read it as a scientist, and I think I'm confused because I think there are a lot more homes that are involved if you simply read that language, okay? And that I think, having gone through the great Buck Gully hearing, which was one of the most contentious items that I've seen in my 40-some years here at Newport Beach, I don't want to do it again, okay? My wife suckered me into going to that. She said, you're the guy with the chainsaw, you've got to go out and take care of it if it's a problem. And I went to there and I said, ooh, this is earning my pay the hard way, because you get into the people that love the trees, the people that hate the trees, the whole works. So, I think this is going to need a lot of explanation. And the city is going to have to send along a team. I would like to see it actually referred to the various committees that I think should look at it. One is the Environmental Committee, one is the Planning Commission, and that we really make sense of what is on the website, okay? I haven't looked at the fire department website, I just looked at the one that you all would be dealing with in the consent calendar. And I can tell you, I have a different reading, and I'm willing to be informed by, by the firemen here. But I think there's going to be a lot of those houses in the center. Oh, I'm sorry, I think there's going to be a lot of those houses in the center that are going to be, that are going to be affected by this. And so, I think one's got to proceed cautiously on this. And we've taken a great deal of the 120 days just getting the thing to here. So, I hope that we won't have to rush this because of this 120-day deadline, that we can get some extensions or something that will allow us to make a very good consideration. And I, I'm going to be talking with the firemen afterwards to see what is the case, because we do have our annual meeting tonight. And I'd like to tell the people in the center of the Highlands what they have to face.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Brian Jeanette. I'm an architect here in the city, and I appreciate the fact that you think there's more study necessary. What I'd like to do is just probably ask some questions that maybe Ron is, would be able to look at that as well, as some of the other questions that have come up so far. One of the things that I think we should revisit, though, is the five-foot setback. And yes, it is on the, on the docket right now, or it's on the records at this point. But there are many lots that are 40 feet wide on Buck Gully, that in order to correspond to this new requirement, if you do a remodel less than 50%, then you don't have to bring the building up to current code. How does this play into the new fire ordinance? So, you have sections of it that's five feet, and other sections of, of the properties that may be three feet. A less than 40-foot or 40-foot lot requires a three-foot setback. If it's greater than 40 feet, 40.01, then it requires a four-foot setback. This is requiring a five-foot setback. If you can't have any openings on the side property lines, you can't have any habitable spaces like sleeping rooms. So, now we start to violate the building code for light and ventilation and exiting out of sleeping rooms. Many of the bedrooms on these homes, on these 30-foot and 40-foot lots, have bedrooms on the side property line, because that's where the sunlight is. So, what's happening, and I'm not sure that this was considered when it was first passed, is the impact to these buildings by going to a five-foot setback or no, no openings is substantial. And I think it, it's a huge diminution of, of land value that should be looked at. The building code, again, requires the exiting, and so now, it won't be able to be had unless you had a five-foot one setback. The landscape requirements, and I've had clients who have been able to show me that this really does exist by stripping some of their coastal bluff, and I get a citation from the Coastal Commission that says, you don't touch that ground, you don't touch that vegetation, without getting coastal approval. That has become, shall we say, one of their most important issues this, these days, especially in Northern California, where people were trying to remove oak trees and pine trees off their property, and were slapped in the courts really quickly. So, to say, we now have this situation where we're going to go out and mandate cleaning up your property, it's, there's a lot more to consider. Coastal Commission also forces us to use drought-tolerant native landscaping, and terminate the irrigation within 90 days after we revegetate that bluff. Fire Department is looking at, probably wanting to have plants that stay green. So, now we're caught in between us telling the city what you want, and then going to Coastal and telling them what they want. And now, you put the homeowner in a catch-22, which one of these really reigns. So, I think it's important to broaden the scope of this, to look at the other impact that you could be forcing a landowner into, especially on Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, Evening Canyon, and along the, the bluffs facing the ocean. The, Ron had a couple of slides up there that I thought were kind of interesting. There are many properties where the most important area of protection is within the first 30 feet, and in most cases, that's on someone else's property. But if you, in upper poppy area of Buck Gully, I had a project where we had a house that was a 30-foot wide lot. And we were able to work with, then the fire marshal Lockard, to come up with alternate means and materials to make it so that we could maintain some windows on a three-foot setback, as well as strengthening the fireproofing systems of the building, like irrigation or sprinkling, irrigation on the grade, minimization of the type of plant materials. And so, we were able to kind of find the sweet spots, so to speak, to, to maintain the value of their property. And I'm hoping that this time that you're looking at will give an opportunity for other architects and officials within the city to look at some of these alternatives that the code does allow, and not kind of throw the gauntlet down. Because I think that would start to make this a little bit more comfortable for some of the landowners where the lesser side yards becomes critical. Something that came up in the Laguna Beach fires, and I think I put back together probably 10 or 12 homes after the fires in Laguna Beach, some of those happened to be homes that I designed originally. The city came back initially and said, no more vents, we don't want any ventilation into the, I'll be quick.
Right.
Into the underfloor spaces or boxing out the eaves, they want to close this off completely. What happens is it creates condensation in those areas, and it starts to dry rot. So, you've got this deck that's now been enclosed completely, and now, five years later, it falls off, and you don't know why. Well, dry rot, the condensation happens in that space because there is no ventilation, and then you have a structural problem that we have to deal with. So, and there are methods to allow venting, and I think we want to make sure that these are available for people to use on their homes to help mitigate that problem, which has been created by, by this problem.
Brian, if you have other ideas, can you just put it in writing to us?
Certainly.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I don't live in this area, so I'm not directly impacted by it. And I haven't actually read all of the staff report that was going to be considered tonight. But my ears did perk up when I heard about the judgment calls and the appeals to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. Mr. Jeanette modestly did not mention that he is on that board, and in fact, the chairman of it. And I just want to give you a quick reminder, I don't know if there's some exception or something different in here, but the last I recall appeals to that cost $6,301, and there may have been a cost of living increase, or since I remember that number. And as, as to your future discussion of this, one thing I think would be helpful for the public and the people who don't know all this terminology, as well as the council and the city manager do, is a, a really quick overview at that time of what the current responsibilities are for maintenance outside this 100-foot defense zone, and whether adopting this is going to make any change to that, and then particularly the city's responsibility and Mr. Jeanette's complications here by the Coastal Commission for open spaces and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Hawkins, Newport Beach. I found it appalling that this was set for a consent calendar item. And I applaud Mr. Kiff's pulling it from the consent calendar. I certainly hope that the next time we see this, it is for a noticed public hearing. Because this is going to affect a lot of people in the southern part of our city. Secondly, there has been questions regarding the notice. And I tried to find the notice, or we tried to find the notice, and couldn't locate any newspaper notice. But I'm going to assume that there was a newspaper notice. Now, if Mr. Hill cannot look at the graphic that we've got on the staff report and determine what's in and what's out, no one looking at the notice in the legal section of the Daily Pilot is going to figure out anything at all. So, the only notice that I have seen that is adequate is the notice on the fire department's website, but that has no date on it whatsoever. So, I think the notice is a problem. Now, bear with me. The resolution talks about that fires are not municipal, areas of municipal concern. If that's the case, we don't need a fire department. What the resolution should talk about is that wildfires are not areas of strictly municipal concern. Because clearly, wildfires affect a whole host of areas, including counties, multiple cities, and so on. So, that makes sense. But this ordinance and this effort, it seems to me, needs some pushback by the fire department to the state. Because, and what we need to do is look at our general plan. We've got a safety element. The safety element has areas, and I think it is, figure S4, has several areas that are noticed for fire danger. But the S4 has a specific notation that none of these areas are high severity areas. So, what we're doing in our general plan, and we, well, and I do believe we're going to have to amend it, is we're converting the entirety of the South Coast, or the entirety of the southern part of the city, to high severity areas. Now, I, I think this is a big, big problem. And the ordinance does not, also does not carve out any exception for habitat areas. And the entirety of the down coast area has multiple habitat areas as noticed in our natural resource element. So, I think these are some of the things that need to be addressed. But most importantly, we need a noticed public hearing before the council at a regular city council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sean Burke, and I live on Buck Gully. Thank you for allowing us to present this today. I have a couple of points I'd like to raise, and just for a little bit of background, some of you may recall that I was involved, intimately involved back in the mid-'90s, when the current fire regulations, wildfire mitigation standards were developed with the then-fire marshal and the fire chief, city manager at that time. And those are the standards that have been in existence since 1995, approximately. So, the Chapter 49 amendments that are proposed in this, in this amendment are the ones that we, it's amending the ones that we developed way back then, and frankly, which have worked very, very well for the last 15, 16 years. We really haven't had any problem, particularly when the fire department does their, does the enforcement that they do. And, you know, we have absolutely no criticism of the fire department, we think it's, they're doing a great job out there. My big concern is to point out to the council a couple of very significant ambiguities, and that is with respect to 4903.1A and B. On both of those, these refer to the existence of trees on the properties. Now, the proposed amendment to A says that new and existing properties located in a very high fire hazard severity zone shall reduce the number of trees to conform to the requirements of Government's Code Section 51177F regarding single specimen trees. B requires the same thing with respect to new construction and new trees that are planted. The problem is that the code section that's referred to, 51177F, does not contain requirements. It doesn't contain any requirements at all. The requirement in the government code with respect to what the state is trying to impose on the local municipalities is contained in 51182. 51177 that is referred to in A and B here is simply the definitions, simply definitions that apply in that particular statute. If one were to look at the definition for a single specimen tree and treat that definition as the requirements for a single specimen tree, what you would end up with is one tree in the backyard. And that's simply, that clearly cannot be what is intended, I don't think, by the city or by the state. A single specimen tree means, this is what 51177 says, a single specimen tree means any live tree that stands alone in the landscape so as to be clear of buildings, structures, and so forth, or other trees. And that simply can't be what is, what is meant by the proposed amendment. It would make a lot more sense in A and B to say that the requirements that are contained in 51184, I'm sorry, 51182, are the requirements that should be used to decide whether those trees that are currently existing, and trees that are going to go in, whether they comply with the government code regulations that are put there. My second point is that, as we've discussed many times in the past, when it comes down to proposed amendments and proposed changes to this, is that the proposed changes do not take into account erosion, and they do not take into account habitat concerns. And even the government code, when you look at 51182, the government code itself says that those have to be taken into account. Those have to be taken into account by the standards that are adopted. And nothing in the proposed standards address those at all. And as this council is probably aware, by your own commission report from the Chambers Group back in 2007, this area, this, the entire area, if you look at this map that's imposing, that's delineated here by the fire department, that almost overlaps exactly with habitat areas that have been found to exist by the Chambers Group study in 2007. So, I agree with the other speakers who have said, it's premature to put this on the consent calendar. There are several problems that I think There are several problems that I think need to be addressed and need to be cleared up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ah, seeing no one. Is there any public comment on the items in closed session or on non-agenda items?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Regarding the closed session, I would like, as I have before, to remind you that although secrecy is often allowed by our state laws, there are, the instances in which it serves the public interest seem to me to be very few. I see item A on the closed session you're about to adjourn to is the lawsuit that the city filed against Dennis Holland over his attempt to restore a historic wooden sailing ship in his yard on Holiday Road. This was in the papers when it first came up. I'm sure there's a significant portion of the public that would be interested in what the current status of the case is, and I sincerely doubt that much of what you're going to hear or say in the closed session would prejudice the city's case or make you less effective in representing the interests of the public in this matter. Item B is the, oh, and, yeah, the, before I go on to item B, this, there was a closed session agenda, this is an off-the-agenda item. The mention of Mr. Holland brings up the non-agenda topic of the eucalyptus trees that the city removed from the yards of his neighbors on Holiday Road back on December 7th. I lived nearby there, and I found it curious that as the trees were being removed, nobody was, appeared to be attempting to pull over any of the stumps of those trees, because I distinctly recall that both Mayor Gardner and Councilman Solich asked the staff in the spirit of disciplined thinking, leading to disciplined action, trying to arrive at a definitive conclusion as to whether those trees actually were in danger of falling over. To the best of my knowledge, the public is still awaiting a conclusion as to that. Item B then, on the closed session agenda, is the conference with the labor negotiator over the talks with the employee bargaining groups that include the two police associations, whom, as I understand it, have agreed, we have agreed, to refund their pension contributions if new agreements are not reached by next month. I thank the city manager for pointing out at your last meeting the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, and I respect his belief that it requires the public to be kept strictly in the dark about talks leading to a labor agreement. I'm sure the labor laws are extremely complex, but I would remind you that we are talking here about public employees, and their ultimate employees are not the city's staff, but they are the residents of the city. And the California Constitution proclaims a policy of transparency in government in our state, and it gives charter cities, such as our own, complete and absolute authority over how much we pay our municipal employees and our elected officials, rights which I'm not sure can be contravened by a state law attempting to do something to the contrary.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please?
Mr. Non-Agenda Public-
Yes, uh-huh.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Alan Trider, Newport Coast. A lot of us are concerned and disappointed in Newport Coast that $2.5 million would be spent on a bridge going across MacArthur, that no one, to any great degree, will use. I know it goes from City Hall, but unless you want to get a sandwich at Gelson's, it really is going nowhere, and public money could be better used. At Newport Coast Elementary, where we have a road at Newport Coast Drive that is 60 miles an hour, we have an underparked school with 43 spaces, and by the way, I was the chairman of the committee for parents when the school was built 10 years ago. I called City Hall, and if I had a private school, I'd have to have 118 spaces, so it isn't just like 5 or 10 adjustment. So consequently, the parents park in the parking lot of Von's Pavilions, and I can't believe that they don't complain, and about 250 parents and children cross that street and come back that way. We have, the parents have to pay for one crossing guard, and I believe the district pays for two. It's a very difficult location that the school was ever built in on, and it is going to have a casualty. People go 60 miles an hour, and sometimes they don't quite make the yellow light and move on ahead. So the money should be used to have a bridge over there, far more useful for far more people, and we are talking about a major lawsuit if it's going to happen, let alone the moral responsibility to put the dollars where they will do good for the community. It is just, I'm just shocked that when I saw in the paper that they were going to spend this money so unwisely, and I would ask you very much to relocate those funds where it could be used for the safety of our community. Newport Coast pays about a third more in taxes, but whether we did or not, you're creating a public nuisance and putting dollars where I, I don't even think 10 to 20 people cross that street on MacArthur, and they're adults. We're talking about 250 kids that go back and forth, and it wouldn't be so many if there was actual parking that was sufficient for the school. But it isn't, and that can't change. You can change this, and you can use the dollars to the betterment of the community, and forget that MacArthur situation. Okay? Thank you. Can I hear back from you at some point, or discussion, or?
Um, yes, you can certainly email me, and I'll give you my thoughts on it.
Well, the council's not authorized to comment back on a public comment that's not on the agenda.
Okay, then, well-
But as I say, you can go online, and my information's there, and I'll be glad to chat with you about it.
Does that mean it can go somewhere if we chat enough, or is this just like a?
I can tell you some other things that are being done in that area, and we can go from there.
Okay. We forget that bridge anyway. 200, 2.5 million dollars is a waste. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other public comment? Then we are adjourned to closed session.